Welcome to Red Wing League of Women Voters Meet Your 2024 Candidates. My name is Tina Langton and I am a member of the Executive Committee. Thank you all for coming out. And I'd like to give a special thanks to the candidates for being here and to our community partners, the City of Red Wing, AAUW, Red Wing Area Chamber of Commerce, Citizen Climate Lobby, Prairie Island Indian Community, and Hispanic Outreach for helping us bring this event to you. If you have questions during the event, please use the note cards provided and raise your hand. A question runner will collect it and bring it to our trained question facilitators. For more than 100 years, League of Women Voters has been a trusted source for nonpartisan voter registration and education and a longstanding witness to Minnesota's proud definition of voter access and election integrity. We invite you to visit our state website, LWPMN.org, to learn about the statutes, best practices, and safeguards associated with Minnesota elections, and then follow the link to vote411.org for a one-stop shop for all of your election needs, personalized to your ballot, including a voter's guide. We hope that all of our candidates here tonight have submitted their information to the voter guide. League of Women Voters is a nonprofit organization focused on grassroots voter education. We encourage active and informed participation in government and do not endorse candidates for office or political parties. The opinions expressed tonight are those of the candidates and not those of League of Women Voters. If you're interested in learning more about the League, please stop by our information table. Before we head for the candidates, we have some general information guidelines to share. The forum this evening is being recorded by the City of Red Wing for later broadcasts, and they will probably have it on their site and on our sites in the next few days, but I'll get some more information if you can let me know. The recordings will be made available on local cable access channels, our local and state league Facebook pages, as well as the city's social media sites. Vote411.org is our voter guide where you can check your voter registration, find information about your ballot, and the candidates. Remember, early voting started on September 20th. If you haven't registered to vote or requested an absentee ballot, would like to do so, stop by our table. Before I introduce our moderator, I will read a statement from City Council Ward, one candidate, Kim Beise, who was unable to attend this evening. He says, "I wish I was able to be here tonight to share with you all. Unfortunately, I was originally going to be gone for some training that I was required to have, but due to my son's health, I will be with him this evening. Thank you for your support over the last eight years, and I look forward to serving you for the next four. Feel free to contact me anytime." Now, I would like to introduce our moderator for this evening's forum, Lisa Bailey. Lisa is a Red Wing resident and a longtime League of Women Voters member and past president, a former member of the Red Wing City Council. She now works for Hennepin County as Director of Safe Communities. Thank you, Lisa, for moderating.
Good evening. Thank you, Tina. And first just want to say I'm sorry I delayed things a little bit. I was driving from Hennepin, I got caught in the rush hour traffic, so thank you for bearing with me. Well, it's a great honor to be here tonight. It's sort of a lot more fun, I'll tell you, I see some former city council members out in the audience. It's a lot more fun to be on this side than it is to be in those people's seats. So, I'd first like to ask us all to give this crowd a round of applause, just for being here. You are participating, one of the most basic ways that one can participate in our democracy by stepping up and throwing your hat in the ring and running for elected office, and we thank you for doing that. Couple of ground rules. So, the questions for the candidates, and I'll tell you that I haven't even seen them yet. They were collected online by email and by mail, and then they were reviewed by our experienced League of Women Voters teams, who are all trained. We received many, many more questions than could possibly be answered tonight, so we made a strong effort to select questions that represented the most asked-about topics. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to make an opening statement and 60 seconds to respond to each question I ask. Candidates will also have 60 seconds for a closing statement. Time is being kept by League members Sue Rasterson and Heidi Jones. A few comments, you'll notice that I'm not going to use any titles tonight, such as if someone's an incumbent or they have a professional title, and that's in order to avoid any bias towards incumbent candidates. And I'd like to ask this, is everyone comfortable with me addressing you by your first names? I've gone over the format with each of the candidates. For your information, candidates were asked for tonight's event to tell their supporters to refrain from wearing campaign paraphernalia or waving signs. I'd also like to ask observers to be respectful of the candidates and other observers and keep a civil and respectful tone. In case of inappropriate partisan disruption, there will be one warning, and a second disruption could lead to a pause in the proceedings. I've never had to do that before, so let's not break our streak. Please do not applaud, speak, shout, or make other audible responses while candidates are speaking or at any time during the forum. Any time that suspended applause or other noise shortens the amount of time the candidates have to present, you, the voters, with the information you need to make your choices. You will be invited to applaud at the end of the candidates' closing statements. We have asked candidates to refrain from anything that may be considered a personal statement about another candidate. We expect candidates to speak truthfully. We reserve the right to allow candidate or League member to respond if those guidelines are not followed, and each of the candidates also has an opportunity for one rebuttal statement. They can wave, I think it's a green card, and then I will call on them at the end of that particular question. Okay, at this time, please join me in welcoming the Red Wing City Council and mayoral candidates, and I'll read them out, and then we can greet them with applause at the end. Nikki Buck, Donna Clever, Gary Yaco, Min Martin Ofs, Beth Thomas Snyder, and Wen Ben Wellman. And let's give them one more applause. All right, we are going to start with the first question, and I'm going to...
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, we're going to start with the opening statements. I'm going to read out the order, and I'll read the first three and then the second three, just so everyone can retain that. We'll start with Don, and then Min, and Beth. Don, would you please give us her opening statement, please?
Thank you. Greetings. I'm Don Clever, I'm your current Ward Two Representative. I'm requesting your support. Much is happening in our vibrant community of Red Wing, and I wish to see the projects completed. Why vote for me? I have a background in serving our citizens, either through my service as a school board member of six years when I lived in Fairmont, Minnesota, just prior to moving to Red Wing 18 years ago, 16 years under the Minnesota Army National Guard, and now serving a little over two years as a Ward Two City Council Representative. I served as a general manager of the Q Media Group in Red Wing for 15 years in council radio stations. Serving as a city council requires a considerable time commitment, which I am now fortunate to be able to accommodate. Tough decisions are continually at the forefront, however, with my business acumen, common sense, as well as direction from citizens, we will make the best decision with the information available. Donna Clever, rather experienced experience, a voice for all citizens, offering common sense in uncommon times. Thank you.
Next, Dan?
Hi, I'm Min Martin Ofs, and I'm running for the Ward Two seat on Red Wing City Council because I believe in serving my community. And I've done that for 30 years, as a teacher and school principal, as a community volunteer, and as a member of two city commissions. I was raised in a blue-collar immigrant family with a lot of people living in a small house, and so I learned some things from my growing up years and from my work in the schools. And one of the things I learned is that we have to work with people who think about things differently than we do in order to solve problems. As a school principal, I was in charge of multiple budgets, and there was never enough money in any of those budgets. However, I still had to move forward to solve the problems in my school because that's what leaders have to do. As I've been out door knocking, I've really enjoyed hearing about what's important to you. And so far, I've heard that you want strong schools for our kids, you want taxes that are fair, you want choices in housing, you want mental health resources, and you want elected leaders that will listen. All that seems fair to me. But mental health and housing have both been mentioned in the 2040 plan and also in the new strategic plan. So, let's stop admiring these problems and get busy solving the problems for Red Wing. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank the League of Women Voters who's done an amazing job putting this forum together, and I want to thank you, Tom, I want to thank you for being here tonight, especially since it's so beautiful tonight. I'm Beth Thomas Snyder. Some of you know me as Beth Thomas, some of you know me as Dr. Beth or Dr. Thomas, some of you know me as Beth Snyder, or George's wife, or Adam and Jessica and Erica's stepmom. Some of you may know me privately in your own little circle by different names that can't be mentioned on this stage, but I've had a lot of roles. I've been here 30 years. I got married here, I raised my family here, I started my surgical career here, and my medical leadership career here. I have extensive leadership and management experience. One of the things I'm most proud of in my career is I was able to bring many disparate groups together to create common goals and common visions. It was the hardest work I've ever done, but the most satisfying work. I have ongoing board experience in Hawaii as well as tax board experience. I am optimistic about our city's future and believe I have a unique skill set which will serve the citizens of Wards Three and Four as well as the citizens of Red Wing well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Ben, followed by Nikki and Gary.
Hi there. My name is Ben Wellman, and I am running for Wards Three and Four of City Council. I am a new but very proud resident of this great community. I cannot begin to express my gratitude to all of the people of this community who have made me feel so at home here. Not only do I feel like this is my new home, I feel like it was kind of my home all along, I just took 32 years to land here. I believe strongly that housing affordability is something that Red Wing is struggling with, much like every other community in our country, and I would very much like to have help in, or I would like to be able to help make things a little bit more manageable for our neighbors and fellow residents. Additionally, I also believe that I would just really like to serve this community. I cannot begin to ever repay the great kindness that people have shown me, but I sure would like to try, and I can't think of a better way to do that than to help serve the community on City Council. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Madaki. Hello, my relatives. My name is Nikki Buck. I was, I am born and raised on Prairie Island Indian Community, enrolled tribal member of Prairie Island Indian Community, and I lived in Hager City, Wisconsin from 1985 until I came back to Red Wing in 1993. I'm an independent contractor with the Land and Environment Department of Prairie Island Indian Community where I manage, run, and give garden tours at our cultural building. I also am an independent contractor with the Honoring Dakota Project and a current outgoing school board member. What I would bring to the table is I have a unique perspective of when presented with problems, and by looking with, using my unique perspective, I have an opportunity to bring multi-different diverse groups of people together as well, and able to come up with viable solution that benefits all citizens and community members. PWI.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gary Yaco, I'm running for mayor of Red Wing. My wife, Katie, and I have 40 years. We moved into the Red Wing community in 1987. We raised two children, Katie and Leah, here, they went to the schools, they're doing very well. What are qualifications? What do we do, what do you, how do you pick, are they going to pick one of these folks up here, one of us? My experience in business, in 1982, I started a business. We grew that business. Right now, we have 24 different locations of dental laboratories around the country, we have over 500 team members, and I retired as chairman of the board last fall. Right now, I work part-time at St. Joseph's as a janitor because you have to have something to do. As far as experience in civics, I was elected a township official numerous times, I was elected accounting commissioner in Leucue County, so I know how that works. You know, people say we have to run our government, this is the same way we run business. Yes and no, but I have that experience. What do I do in the community? I think I volunteered at many, many different boards and events. Lastly, I was two-year chairman of the care clinic. Right now, I am the person in charge of the expansion of our dental clinic, and we will hopefully discuss some of the important issues tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We'll go to question number one. I think everyone can agree that one of the most important roles of a city council is to oversee and decide upon the city's budget. What are your ideas to increase city revenues or to decrease city expenses by cutting? And we're going to start, I should have asked Gary, if you're going to be starting right up there. Gary, and then Nikki, and then Ben.
There's a couple...
Would you like to read it again?
We're beginning to think. There's a couple of things we need to do in Red Wing. We have grown 431 people since 2000. 431 people. Everything is increasing. Everything is costing more, not only for our families, but for the city also. Now, in comparison, Hastings has grown at over 400% more than Red Wing has. Drive to Hastings and you see vibrant restaurants, you see things to do there. We have to expand our pool of folks that pay taxes, meaning we have to have more housing. And let's look at, Red Wing is landlocked, so let's look at annexing, going out to some of the land that we can provide services to. Let's say 300 acres, 300 acres with 200 homes on there, 1,300, 1,500 square feet that young families can afford to buy, that seniors that want to downsize from their 3,000 or 4,000 square foot home can downsize. That would help us bring in more of our economy.
I had a wonderful opportunity to come into the government through the school board and being able to work with a board of seven, six, minus one, seven, and being able to creatively come up with ideas. I never would want to cut anything, but be very creative in the ideas on how we can generate more revenue through tourism perhaps, through helping already businesses establish but helping new businesses come in and establish and thrive, looking at having partners and other grant systems. But if, I would rather not take away but add value to. PWI.
I believe that Red Wing could, will benefit from a more diverse tax base. Like others have said, we don't want to risk cutting very necessary services that all of our community benefits from. In order to do that, welcoming new businesses into our community that haven't really ever seen Red Wing as a viable option is a good start. Additionally, also offering local current businesses the ability to expand if they have ideas in which, on how to do so, we need to maybe cut some of that red tape that is blocking them from doing so. Another thing also, like others have said, is we do need to bring more people into our community. Having, having the ability to freely move into this community will enable people to also bring with them their mind, or their views and their suggestions, which we could very well benefit from.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have Don, Beth, and Min. I'll read the question one more time, it's Don's question. What are your ideas to increase city revenues and/or decrease city expenses by cutting? Or, or other words?
I mean, cutting, I don't like to look at the process of cutting. I look at the option of reducing costs for a city, and that's not very easy. We have to understand that our biggest cost is our employees. We have eight unions, and they're on the negotiating table right now, so we don't know where that's going to go. Working on a budget as we speak, with our next budget workshop is coming up here next week. We have to see where we're at here. As far as generating additional revenue, there's, one of the things that we're working on is trying to, in the past, I haven't been on two years, but the percentage of revenue that we received from Xcel Energy back in the beginning was 75%, we're now down to 44%. So, one thing we need to do is to try to incorporate that, and that should help generate additional revenue. There are other options that we're looking at, but that's, there are negotiations at this time. Thanks.
Beth?
I think the key, our key is growth, as was going about yesterday. If we, if we don't grow, there's no revenue. And growth means both in our residents, in our housing, across the spectrum, as well as our businesses. We need to make it easy for businesses to be here. As I talk to people in this chamber, we have higher tax rates than their surrounding communities, we have higher rents, which is, which is difficult for new businesses to come here and open up, and there's also barriers that we have that make it difficult for people to come here. I think the other thing we need to think about, and I don't like the word cutting, no one does, but being in healthcare, that's a big issue in healthcare is cutting. I think what we need to do is look for efficiencies and ways to work differently. I think when you have a $27 million budget that is proposed for this year, it's difficult to believe there's not some ways to, some efficiencies we can find to work better and differently. Thank you.
Well, the first thing I would say is, everything's connected to everything else. And so, let me start by saying that I'm a big believer in representative democracy. So, if I'm elected, then I need to be listening to people to tell me what they want. And so, any cuts, first of all, have to be a really careful and thought-filled process, and they have to be informed by the voters. It can't be my idea, it has to be our idea. I think that's absolutely critical. You know, as pretty much everybody has said, increasing housing so that we can increase folks moving here, we can increase our tax base, is another very critical piece. And we do have some unique opportunities, such as the possibility of a cannabis dispensary, which would greatly increase revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number two. We'll start with Beth, then Ben, and then Gary. What is the role of the city council in relation to its staff? Start with Beth, then Ben, and then Gary.
So, first off, I, as their press secretary is looking defensive, I believe our, our employees of the city are an incredible invaluable resource for us. And so, I think it's really important that they are, they feel that they're empowered, that they have what they need to do their jobs, that they can work in a safe and environment, and that they're adequately staffed. The role of city councils is to make sure that that is being done and hold their leaders accountable for that. I think it's important that we do staff surveys to find out how we're doing, and that perhaps even, I know in healthcare as a leader, I, my benefits, my compensation was tied to how I, how I performed with my employees on the employee survey. I think that's just one option to consider, but as city council, we need to hold those leaders accountable to make sure that we, that our staff is adequately staffed and that they're happy in their jobs. Thanks.
I believe that city council not only has to kind of be the face of the city hall, I believe that they need to accurately represent the, the beliefs and morals of the city staff. They also need to treat them equitably and respond to them with, or when they have complaints or concerns, they need to be addressed as well. I know that they are currently struggling with a, or pay issues that have been kind of backburnered, and it is something that I feel should be addressed responsibly and with great care. They are people that genuinely allow our community to thrive. They need to be treated as such. Thank you.
Gary, next.
I've met with every department head in the city extensively, talked to them, they're looking at ways to be more efficient also. Our engineering department lost K.O.s, and they're not going to be able to find another engineer, they've tried. So, and we're looking at, they are looking at public works and engineering combining those departments together. They're looking at different creative ways. We have a very good city staff. I think that we need to make sure that it's always not, we're going to cut staff, we're going to cut staff, we have to, they make too much money, they do this, they do that. That's not it. We have to make sure that we promote our staff. They're doing a great job. The city police department is fully staffed after the last two trainees passed their training. First time in, I think, eight or 10 years. People want to come and work here, they want to live here. So, how do we make sure that it's affordable?
Next, we're going to have Min, Nikki, and Don.
So, having, sharp words, so having supervised staff of 35 for many years, one of the things I know that staff really want are incentives, and so those incentives come in different packages. And so, one of the incentives is support. Are they getting the support they need? Are they getting decent benefits? But let's be honest, the number one incentive is pay in almost every area of work. And I think just noticing and acknowledging and speaking out loud what we see that is being done well makes a huge, huge difference. Recently, when I was door knocking, I had a couple that moved here from out of state that told me that they don't mind the taxes they're paying here because they see their tax dollars being spent well by our public works department. That needs to go back to our public works department and then be told what a nice job they're doing. Thank you.
I believe that the role of city council is to, within relation to the employees, is trusting the employees to do the job that they were hired to do and working together as an efficient team to make sure that all of city, community, and business needs and government needs are met with thought, trust, and progression to move forward to a better place for everybody to dwell in. PWI.
Can you repeat the question? Yes. What is the role of the city council in relation to staff?
We find our, I mean, our staff, well, give me an example. Earlier this year, we found our law enforcement department was short about six officers. We were losing officers through other communities in the area. So, what we needed to do, we put together, they had gotten an increase in their, in their union contract, but we also put an additional 6% on the officer's pay scale, so it went all the way up. What that did was create a pay equity study, which it went across city staff. So, just, I think we were doing the best we can with what we have to work.
So, just, I think we're doing the best we can with what we have to work with. Just our increase going into next year is the increase of $1 million in costs for the employees. We try our hardest to make sure that they're compensated fairly, and I think they are. And I don't know that... I don't hear a lot of issues in that regard, but we just want to make sure they're happy.
Thank you. All right. The next question's going to be a liking round. I'm going to ask each of you, we just want a yes or no answer. We're just kind of shaking things up a little bit. So, we'll start with Ben, Beth, and Min. Does the city of Red Wing need a full-time fire department? Yes or no?
No.
Ben?
Yes.
Just from your seat. Yeah, sorry.
Absolutely.
Yes. Yes. And next, we'll have Don, Gary, and Nikki.
Yes.
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 All right. Well, clearly, I think I want to put something a little more interesting than that. I'll pick up something else. Okay. Okay. The next poll question is... How will you foster an inclusive environment that values the perspectives and needs of all residents, even those who disagree with you on issues you are passionate about? We're going to start with Nikki, then Gary, and Min. And I'll read the question together. How will you foster an inclusive environment that values the perspectives and needs of all residents, even those who disagree with you on issues you are passionate about?
My first month on school board, I went to coffee with Jim Bryant, and Jim Bryant had said, "I now know that you don't get upset with anybody, you just get upset with situations." And I said, "Think of Jim." And for the first time in my life, that was the first time a white man has ever seen me for who I am, right? And not just based on, you know, what I do. And so, to foster an inclusive... I've been an advocate in a social justice game for forty-four years. I was born into an unfair world, not only as an American Indian, but I was, in 1985, diagnosed with ADHD and brought into special education. So, my entire life has been fostering meaningful relationships with diverse groups of people in order to get by. Pw.
Could you read the question again? Yes. How will you foster an inclusive environment that values the perspectives of all residents, even those who disagree with you on issues you are passionate about? I'm sorry, I missed a word. How will you foster an inclusive environment that values the perspectives and needs of all residents, even those who disagree with you on issues you are passionate about?
I think it comes down to a lot of communication and discussion and seeing what's important to some people. What's important to some people is not important to others, and vice versa. So, how do we come together as a community? Because if we're not going to be inclusive, what are we going to then? Everybody has different points of view. So, how do we take a little bit of everybody's points of view and work to get a plan that will work together so that we can all get along, whether it's on the city council or whether it's just with all of our citizens? We need to be professional, we need to be courteous, and we just need to make sure that your opinion is not the only opinion, or my opinion is not the only opinion. We don't need agendas for folks that are elected and might be... Thank you.
So, one of my core values is that I believe, as humans, we're always called to draw the circle larger. We're always called to find ways to include people. And I have a rich and long history as a special education teacher and a special education intern strator. Special education for the last fifty years has been all about inclusion. How do we help kids be part of the mainstream? And that's really important for a lot of reasons, because it increases their learning. But also, I want to have a parent or a child with special needs tell me, "I want my son to sit next to a child who does not have special needs," because one day, that other child, my own business, and my son might have a job there. So, I just think it's the most important thing we can do. And one of my things is to have an informal time to talk with residents on an ongoing basis so that I will know what's important and how I can include people.
Next, we'll have Beth, Don, and Ben. I'll read the question again. How will you foster an inclusive environment that values the perspectives and needs of all residents, even those who disagree with you on issues you are passionate about?
I think it's vital for all of us, and particularly as a council member, that we approach all conversations with the following principles. First off, be curious. Don't assume judgment, don't assume you know where they're coming from. Be curious. Be curious about where they're coming from and their thoughts. The second is to assume best intentions. Sometimes, that's really hard when you're working with someone that you disagree with, or maybe you've inspired them in the past. But if we assume best intentions both ways, I think it makes for a better conversation. We always need to treat everyone with dignity and respect, even if we disagree. It's vital. We're human beings, we need to care for each other and do that. And we should be, particularly as a council member, I need to be open and transparent in my communications and my thought processes of what I'm doing and why. Thank you.
I have to agree with a couple of things that were said. I think communication is the key. One of the things that I pride myself in is that my constituent contacts may have an issue. I always respond and ask if we can't get together and talk about it. And a lot of the time, what happens is there's miscommunication that's been put out there that was misunderstood. And usually, we can work our way through whatever the issue is. Sometimes, we're going to agree, sometimes we're going to disagree. We have to agree and disagree once in a while. So, I think communication is the key and an open-door policy to call and contact at any time.
Like others have said, communication, it really goes a long way. Just being able to find common ground, not only in spaces where we agree, but spaces we disagree. There's always something that can be... If you approach a conversation maturely, you can have... You will find that people are just passionate because it's important to them, and it might make their lives easier, it might make their lives more enjoyable. And furthermore, it's not necessarily my job as a city council person to push my passions over anyone else's. My job is to represent our community, and the best way to do that is by taking the input of our community and putting that on the front burner. My passions might have to become second to the community members. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take... Several of you have mentioned the need to grow the population of Red Wing. What role do you think the city council and mayor could play in developing Red Wing's workforce and growing the population? And what are your... Importantly, and this is where I want everyone to respond to this, what are some of your ideas for doing that? We're going to start with Min, then Ben, and then Don.
So, again, it's all connected. I think one of the biggest things we could do is really effectively address our shortage of housing, because that is getting in the way of bringing people here. I can give you a real-life professional example. I used to hire teachers, and I have, a couple times, extended contracts to people who would be excellent, and I was so excited to fill those roles. And those people turned down the contract because they could not find a place that they could afford to live as a first or early-career teacher. So, I feel like, you know, really making sure that there are options for people is a really important piece of growing our workforce.
What role should the city council and mayor play in developing Red Wing's workforce and Red Wing's population? And what are your ideas to attract new residents?
As I've said earlier, I am a resident of this community. One of the things that was a struggle for me in moving here was finding a stable... or finding stable employment. I was fortunate enough to meet some very credible people who have helped me do that, and I believe that that should be part of the role of city council, is enabling the city to have resources available to new residents. But in order to do that, of course, we do need to figure out how to expand our housing. That doesn't just necessarily mean build a bunch of homes and hope for the best. That means that we need to build homes strategically that enable a diverse group of people to bring their skills to our community so that we can all benefit together. Thank you.
This is a big question. You have to realize that Red Wing, over the last few years, has added over, north of seven hundred and fifty new units in our community. Over the next year and a half, we're going to add another hundred units downtown, with another potential hundred and twenty units that are going to be added in the downtown area over the next three to four years. So, a lot of these things are happening. What we need is single-family homes or townhouses, things of that nature. And if you know Red Wing, you know we're vertically challenged. So, finding areas where these can be developed is an issue. And that's one of the things, you know, you mentioned earlier, we may have to figure out annex and find some property, but this probably can't be answered in sixty seconds with everything else that's happening. So, thank you.
Next, we'll have Nikki, Gary, and Beth.
I'd like to think I'm already starting to do that by the current work that I'm doing with Honoring Dakota Project. Building bridges between historically non... Between the communities that haven't always had good representation. Inviting people authentically by doing the work, showing up as community, you know, "We're all in this together," and it's going to get hard, and that was my experience on school board. But you continue to show up, and everybody, the people that care, will continue to show up, and we can move through this together. It's not always going to be rainbows and butterflies, but that's life, and I want to do this life without you. Pw.
Well, as someone who has built a business, and we go around the country, we have twenty-four locations, when we look at either adding another business into our group or starting a brand new one, we look at the employment base. What is available for us? And in Red Wing, it's very, very low. Last week, we had a conference at the college on demographics and retention of employees. In the next seven to ten years, we're going to have a deficit of employees in the area. When a business is going to come and look at moving into our town, what is our employment? How many people do we have available? We have to start with some different housing. It's not... There's no silver bullet to economic development. We're going to have to take some hard looks. We're going to have to expand outside of Red Wing. As Don said, we're landlocked. So, how do we do that? And how do we continue to increase? We have to grow. The city is just like any other business. You have to grow in order to stay in business. Otherwise, our taxes are just going to keep rising and rising and rising. We need to make that pool expand a little bit, the folks that pay taxes.
Gary was safe from the ballot. So, a lot of these ideas are not new. What I think about a lot is, to me, it feels a bit like the chicken and the egg. What comes first? Do we build houses, but then people have places to work? Or do we build buildings that get businesses, but there's no one to work? So, we have to bring those two together. And we are landlocked, but we do have land. And I think we need to first look at the land we have and figure out what we're going to use for business, what we're going to do for residents, and what type of residents do we need on those spots, and what type of businesses do we want to attract here. And then, we need to make it easier and remove barriers for both to happen. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. The next question. We'll start with Don, and Min, and then Beth. Would you support commercial marijuana sales in the city when the guidelines are completed? And what requirements would you expect from such a business?
Well, what I support isn't going to matter because we have no voice. It was passed by the legislature that Red Wing is required, hear me right, required, if a party wants to have a cannabis operation or dispensary here. We are required to have two of them. So, there are a few things that we can do to determine where they're located by zoning, but it's not a matter whether any of us are going to support or not. It's already a done deal. So, we are looking at some other options, how that can be handled in our community, and stay tuned.
So, as Don said, yeah, you know, it is happening. In other words, we can have a cannabis dispensary. Right now, there's a proposal before the council that's being talked about, and there was a letter of support for that proposal, for a cooperative venture between the tribe and the city, which I think could be a great partnership in a lot of different ways. I think the other thing that we really need to be mindful of is cannabis sales are going to happen, and there is significant revenue to be brought in, and there is the opportunity before us for a partnership. So, I say yes to all of those.
It is our reality. We can limit how much we have here. And as a clinician, I have a hard time with the city selling cannabis and being part of that. I mean, we got... Sure, it's a red industry. We sold alcohol, it's a red industry too. But cannabis can be addictive, it can be harmful to our youth, it can cause depression in our youth. I won't say it's an entry-level drug, but it's becoming more accessible, so it's easier for youths to use it. It's also more accessible for it to be misused, because if it looks like a common bear and it's eating them a little kid, it could have bad consequences. So, I'm not sure... I have a hard time as a city, if we're worried about the health and mental health of our community, that we would sell, be part of selling cannabis. In young men, if you use it a lot, it can cause schizophrenia. Is that really what we want to be part of in the city?
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Ben, then Nikki, and Gary.
As Don mentioned, it's going to happen. It's not a... It's not an if, it is a when. And if there is, as Min mentioned, a cooperative option on the table, I think it's a smart play only because it allows the city to keep one hand on the wheel when it comes to cannabis. If we allow an outside organization to come into our community, they bring outside issues potentially that maybe we aren't equipped for. We have seen that Highland Pedigree has had been successful, so I think that if we are able to create a cooperative agreement between us and the tribe, I think that enables us to ensure a level of safety for our community and, most importantly, our residents. Thank you.
Yes, I support the partnership between Prairie Island and Red Wing. I was a part on Prairie Island's side. From a land and environment perspective, we were tasked with doing a lot of research and stuff like this before it even became legal. But that's not... That's not a part of our work, so that would have to be in an agiculture department. But when it did become legal, it was part of a committee that helped engage the community to pick up their brand and how they want to present themselves. The process was long and expensive and very, very informational and productive for us. So, yes, I would support that. So yes, I would support that.
As Don mentioned, the state legislator said, Wes Snatcher said, we have to have two. For every 12,500 people, you need to have one cannabis shop. We're over that, we're at 15,000, so we need to have two. I support the Native American folks running the second store. They already have one that my treasurer, if they open another one, then we have two. We've met the state legal requirements. The folks out in the Native American community, they run a casino. They know how to do things properly. They know how to make sure that it's done properly. Should the Old West lane, should the city put $1.2 million into that building and have a seven-year return on investment? When I was in business, if we had a three-year return on investment, that was good. Seven years is not acceptable. We don't know what's going to happen seven years from now. Let's put it in a different location. There's the Old Bank in Baton Rouge. It has a vault, a vault, excuse me, has a drywall and it's not going to be on Old West Lane. But I don't think the city needs to be a vault.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start, I'm sorry, Gary, I should have had you stand back up there. We'll start with Gary, then Nikki, and then Beth. And this is about decision-making. And I know from experience, being on the city council, you're just making decisions and decisions and decisions. You need to have some way of doing that. So suppose a new resolution is on the agenda. It's asking for money for a new service, new service for residents. How do you decide which way to vote?
Well, as mayor, we're a lead mayor of assistance, so I don't have to vote if I'm elected. But I would have any vote. And it just depends on what that is. I don't think we can answer the question and say, I vote for it or against it. It depends on what that is. Is it helping, say, homeless folks? Okay? Is it helping drug addicts? Is it helping putting more flowers down the street? Those types of things, everything, you can't just say, right, standing right here, how would I vote? Because you need to have all the information. And I think as a mayor, my, if I'm elected, it's an ambassadorship. Obviously, we'll have input on everything the city does, but it's an ambassadorship. How do we bring our people in Red Wing together more? How do we bring people from outside of Red Wing here for living with remote education now and they're home working? If we have more places for them to live, we can bring more folks into Red Wing.
I would have to agree with Gary on that situation because it's going to depend on what the situation is and the service and the needs of the community. Because there are certain things that could, it could require, but it could help with funding sources in different areas. So knowing what the new service and the need for the community would, and having all the information to make that. And then also having community conversations with the community to get their input and actually have their voice, help guide the decision and things like that. So, I don't know.
Gary and Nikki are both right. It does require us to really kind of look into what decisions are actually being made. But most importantly, I'm just one voice of city council. It's not about necessarily my own pushing for a decision to be made. It's about uniting with my fellow city council members to make a decision together that best benefits the largest amount of people in our community. We cannot just focus on short-term returns and focus on the, excuse me, focusing on more than just who it's going to benefit quickly. We have to focus on how it's going to benefit or cost our community overall, long-term, not just in the interim. Thank you.
Next we'll have Don, Beth, and Min. The question again, suppose a new resolution is on the agenda for next week, asking for money for a new service resident. How do you decide which way to vote?
Well, this is, one, you have to get all the information you can, staff realize that, or the majority of it in our agenda packet, which by the way, can sometimes exceed about four or 500 pages, so you get to read that before your reading. So you get that information. The other thing that I do is I like to go and visit constituents, give you an idea of what we're talking about, the cannabis situation. I don't know what's made. And one thing I did, I took a morning and I went out and I started visiting with all merchants that are currently down there to see what their thoughts and opinions were on that type of establishment being located in that area. And it gives you a better, I mean, when you talk to your constituents, you get a better feedback how you're going to deal with some of these decisions. So, that's what I do.
When I think about a new service, I think the questions we need to ask is what's the purpose of the new service? Is there a need for it? And how many people actually need it? What, how many people require this? What's the cost of the service? The cost both financially and in a manpower cost? Do we have or does that department have the capacity to serve that? And then finally, we need input. We need input from the people it's going to serve, as well as input from the people that maybe don't think we need this service. So that's what, how I would approach it moving forward. Thanks.
Well, as a principal, there were a lot of days that I suffered from decision fatigue because it's one decision after another. So I'm going to talk about the way I would make the decision rather than what I would decide. So the first thing I would do is talk to the residents. And my plan is to have a regular time where I can informally talk with the residents and board too, so that I'm really in touch on an ongoing basis with what they want and what's important to them. You need to look at the economic impact. You also need to look at the social impact of any decision, strategic plan, Red Wing 2040. And again, it needs to be our priority, not my priority. That would move something forward.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll start with Beth, then Ben, and Gary. We've heard tonight about the need to increase the population and bring new families, or that's my word, I said bring new people, but I presume they'll be families to Red Wing. What programs or services would you like to see implemented or changed for the young people in Red Wing? And again, it's Beth, then Ben, and then Gary.
Well, that one must have been a little bit later, so I have to think. And I'm using up my 60 seconds. So I'd like, I love the Y, I'd like to fly. I'd like to make that more accessible. I think it's fairly accessible, but I think there's opportunity to make that more accessible. I also like the idea of, and I'm blanking on the name, it's not a youth center, but it's a center that they're starting for the youth, that's separate from Hawaii, for a place for kids to meet and not have to pay dues, but it's a safe place for them to be. I also think that restarting the mentorship program, particularly in middle school and high school, would be helpful to help us as adults connect to the kids in the community and to support our youth programs. There are youth programs besides sports, like the debate, the drama, things like that. I think that's all we're even for. Thank you.
Well, as a sort of young person who's recently joined our community, I can confidently say that there are, there are some things that Red Wing does incredibly well. With the, with people and their love for nature, Red Wing is knocking it out of the park. But what a lot of, what a lot of younger people are looking for is a little bit of diversity in our businesses. We have a lot of great businesses that are, that target our tourists, but we don't have a lot of businesses that really service the needs of millennials and younger. We have restaurants, we have shopping. That's kind of it. I think that if we were, if we could focus on maybe being a little bit attractive to businesses that cater to the entertainment of youth, we could really, really succeed in that. Thank you.
Well, someone that's dealing with heart, maybe not so much in activity life. It all comes down to, as Ben said, you know, how do we get more folks, something for this, something? You know, my daughters don't want to live in Red Wing because they say there's nothing to do. Well, there's nothing to do because the businesses have to be able to sustain and make a profit. They have to be able to look at themselves and say, okay, I'm going to come to Red Wing, I'm going to open up a business, I'm going to do this. Well, how am I going to pay my bills? How am I going to be profitable? And we just don't have enough people to do that. So we have to, we have to grow. It's again, it's not a silver bullet how we do it, but we can't just keep talking and talking. You know, there's things that we can do if a developer wants to come in and it's not zoned properly. Let's not take 12 months or 18 months or 24 months to look at it and rezone it. Let's get together with developers, with cities, so we do it right and bring more family housing into Red Wing.
Thank you. Next we'll have Min, Nikki, and Don.
Well, as former early childhood director for Red Wing Public Schools, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that we have excellent early childhood services and we need to keep those strong and keep expanding those and have high-quality childcare available for families. Families will not want to move here if they can't find a place for their little ones. I think that's critically important. I was just on a doorknob the other day and I asked the gentleman, you know, is there anything you'd like to change about Red Wing? And he's like, oh, things could stay open after six. That'd be great. And I do remember there was a time when Thursday night was the late night, when everything was open late. So that might, you know, provide some incentive for people as well. I also think that things that would be really interesting and engaging for people much younger than myself. A young theater friend just moved away because he said, you know what, Min, I love all you people, but there's nothing here for people my age to do. So I think those are some of the things that we would have to look at.
Nikki, and then Don.
I forgot to mention I'm a licensed foster care parent on top of having three children myself. My entire life is children. That's why I'm on the school board too. My idea is we do intergenerational, born and raised in a community, hosting events and having activities that are intergenerational. From birth, well, we like to think from pregnancy to elder. So when you have those younger generations engaging with the elders, that also helps spark a lot of memories from those elders. And they're open to tell us some really awesome wisdoms. So that's, that's my idea is invoking the whole community intergenerationally. PW, I agree.
I was at a meeting not too long ago and this subject came up and I was quite surprised. I grew up in a city of 1,000 people. And I can't imagine what we, and we have so much to offer in this community. By the trails and river and, I mean, there's golf, which I can also. The only thing that can be negative again that had this doesn't is hurling. If anybody knows what that is. So I got to do that as a kid. Other than that, I would agree to be brought to Red Wing with all of the activities and potential here. So obviously, I'm a senior here, so we're talking about generations or a few, few years now. And you know, probably the way to find out what's of interest to those folks is to have a meeting with them and see what interests them. So I can't imagine what they're missing.
We're going to do a second lightning round. I'll see if I can get a little more controversy coming here. Alan's asking if you could just go right down the road. We'll just start with Ben. Do you, this is just a yes or no question. Do you support the installation of solar energy panels on city buildings, electric vehicles for the city fleet, and additional charging stations? Yes or no?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes, with reservations.
Yes, with, that's a bigger topic. Thank you. Okay. Red Wing, as we all know, is blessed with amazing parks and amazing beauty, natural beauty and trails. I'd like, in this question, to have some conversation about our city's parks and trails. How do the city's parks and trails benefit the city, in your opinion, both the residents and visitors? And do you agree with the city's current management of its parks? I'll read that again. And first I'll tell you who's going to be Ben, then Beth, and then Min. How would the city's parks and trails benefit the city, both residents and visitors? And do you agree with the city's current management of its parks?
Start with a little anecdote. I moved here because of the nature that Red Wing provides its residents and its visitors. I toured, I was a very constant tourist of this town for 10 years and then thought, hell, what am I doing driving here all the time? I should just live here. We have incredible hiking and incredible biking. And as far as how it benefits us, it benefits the visitors because there are a lot of visitors who come to Red Wing with a very low budget for tours or for while they're traveling. And we offer a lot of parks that enable them to enjoy our community without spending a lot of their very hard-earned dollars. As far as how it benefits our residents, it brings people to our community who then would bring their money to our economy. I would, and I cannot think of a better way to welcome them into our community than by putting them into our nature. Thank you.
Our parks are a huge asset to us into our community. The fact that we can go anywhere, walk anywhere, it can be killy, it can be flat. So someone like me can be safe and not have to climb a huge hill. It's great. My grandkids are on the mountain bike trails all the time. Me, not so much. But it's a great place. And I can tell you, when I were commuting to the cities for 10 years, many of the people I worked with would come down here to ride and to hike and even to climb the walls. So I think it's a huge benefit. What do I think about the current management? I think they're doing an incredible job. And I don't have to say that because the guy we're talking to is my neighbor, Pat. He does an incredible job, but they do do an incredible job. If you think about all the floods we've had and how quickly things are cleaned up, we are blessed that our city employees are doing such a great job. Thanks.
Well, we have incredible treasure in our trails and our parks. And we really need to take care of those things. You know, our trails and our parks are a couple of things for us. One is it draws people here, as Ben was just saying. He used to come here and then he moved here. That's great. So it draws people here, but it also keeps our citizens healthy here. I made a wonderful discovery during COVID because I used to go to Hawaii in the winter. And then I couldn't go to Hawaii anymore. And I discovered that they keep the sidewalks clear in the parks all winter. Isn't that great? And so I go out and keep walking. And so now in the winter, I'm happy to go and walk outside. I think that's really great. And as terms of our city crews, I couldn't say enough about what an absolutely amazing job they do taking care of the parks, cleaning up after floods. They are just doing a spectacular job.
Next we have Don, Gary, and Nikki.
Yeah, our parks are a huge asset for our community as because of those are trails. And now they've got the mountain bike trails up in the, they're at the City National. True story, I was actually reviewing the cannibal trail here a couple of weeks ago. And a couple of those driving by, I was with the trail manager. We were looking at some, some things we're going to have to repair on the trail. And this couple of stops, the gentleman commented about how much he loved coming to Red Wing because the diversity of our nation. And he said he's from Ryanoke, Wisconsin, and his wife comes to Red Wing four times a year. And he said he's from Ryanoke, Wisconsin, and his wife comes to Red Wing four times a year just to ride the Cannavale Trail. He said, we have beautiful trails as far as Blacktop in Wisconsin, but we only have three pension trees. So he said, this, going down the trail is so rewarding. So it was really nice visiting them. It does draw a lot of tourists from outside.
Well, I think I have a unique perspective on this. Last two years I've been volunteering to water the flower baskets after all the kids go back to college. And the people that you can run into that just say how beautiful our city is. Now, those are just the flower baskets, but we have beautiful parks. You drive around, I park right across the street from my house and I'm just waiting for the guy to cut my grass too and he comes over, but I haven't convinced him yet. But look around and look where it brings us. When I talk to folks that come from out of town, I saw a couple of folks from Morehead, Minnesota, they just can't believe how pretty Red Wing is. We need to use, we need to continue to do that, but we also need to leverage that also to bring more people, to bring more businesses in. These type of things, we really look at business, at an area that makes it such an attractive place. But I recommend that go out and see some of our parks. Go out to the riverbed or the riverfront at about 6:30, we may watch the fall coming. That's over. It's a beautiful sight.
If you've ever noticed me walking around town, picking up trash, before I used to have a big gray brain, now I have a very beautiful Siberian Husky that accompanies me on my walks. Clearly, the Minicha is near and dear to my heart. 2016, I advocated with Uncle Art and the Bridging of Communities to, and we did a full heart ceremony on top. It's meaning to make sure that our relationship is strong and it's going to go for a really long time. So as far as the city maintenance, I think they do a wonderful job. And they're really amazing to work with too, from a perspective on the Prairie Island side because they do consult with a lot of the areas around here with us. So, Pidam.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have one more question before the closing statements. I'm going to take the moderator's prerogative and ask a question that I would like to, I would like to ask. XL Energy is the city's largest tax base. And that number is going down over and will continue to go down. It's also a nuclear power plant and next to the Prairie Island Indian Community. And nuclear storage, nuclear waste storage is an issue. What is your position regarding XL and regarding the city's relationship with XL Energy? What should we be doing differently or what should we be doing the same? We'll start with Nikki, and then Gary, and then Min.
This is a sensitive subject for myself, but as a person as I am, I always want to work with and do better for everybody. And I've had the honor to watch my sister, Shelley Buck, as a tribal council president, take our needs as community members, not as only as Prairie Island Indian Community, but the Red Wing area too, into high consideration when dealing with this. I would just probably, I would look to Prairie Island to see what their relationship with XL is. Just from my personal perspective, I think recently they've done some pretty amazing and wonderful things to build better relationships with the people. So that would be my suggestion.
Well, the plant is here whether we like it or not, so how do we work together with it? I support XL. They, when I was chair of the United Way of Food and Water Shop, Pierce Collins, they're very philanthropic. Also, they're very safe. I've had a tour recently. It is a very, very safe facility. Now, the dry cast storage, we need to move those out. And that's a federal issue. That's not something that we can do. But they're up for relicensing now and if I was mayor, I would support that relicensing. They provide some of the best jobs we have in the county. They are one of our largest employers in the county and they do it in a safe and responsible way. Granted, if there's an issue, it's going to be a big issue. But so far, we haven't had those issues. And we have a lot of safeguards in place, so we don't have those issues.
So I think one of the first things that we need to do is we need to raise and stabilize XL's portion of the tax base. Right now, it's gone up and down. It's gone up a little bit recently. But we really need to stabilize it so that we're not having surprises that then impact homeowners. That's really critical. We need to increase our collaboration and cooperation with XL so that we make sure that, you know, they are providing us the service, but we are also providing them, a big corporation, with a huge benefit as well. So we need to be sure that it's fair and no ends of things. And we need to be clear about what is the plan for the long-term dry cast storage.
Next we'll have Beth, then Don, and Ben.
I do think XL is a huge benefit for our community. As an employer, I agree they're safe. I'm biased, my son works there and now my grandson works there. So I think they're a great corporation. I do, I agree with Min, we need to stabilize the tax base, not have it go up and down. They're a huge employer, they're a huge asset, but they're also part of our community and I think that implies some responsibility. I also think that we need to think about it being equitable. Because they're here and they're a great employer, but because they're nuclear, as a city, we have to provide a lot of different services just in case something goes wrong, which falls on our health works department, it falls on us on taxpayers because we have to have those services available. So I think that we need to be equitable about how we tax them and how they put, how they provide income for us and keep it stable. Thanks.
We currently have a really good relationship with XL as far as the city goes. I believe this year, I can be corrected, but I think, I think the tax base is actually going up about 6%, which was recently disclosed. The, the storage, the dry cast storage is, I had, I had advocated that if, if Red Wing is going to be a host for the dry cast storage, that there needs to be a compensation put together for that. So in essence, if we're going to be on the mountain until they can get that resolved, there needs to be compensation on it. Something that Prairie Island has already been able to negotiate that they did over the last year. And that is in the process as you speak. So, I mean, again, it's something I've stayed clear to lose someone working on.
I agree with Nikki. I think we need to look to the Prairie Island people and see how they have cooperated so strategically and well with XL and model our practices as such. As far as the dry cast storage, Don's right, it is a very big reason why we should be compensated for that. We, XL is not carrying the risk when they're headquartered elsewhere than we do as a, as a community, as a, or at, and also as a place that people might want to move to. When they hear dry cast storage within two miles of where I might be living, they're like, ooh, maybe I don't want to do that. Maybe there's a community that doesn't have nuclear waste nearby. So I think that we should be compensated as such. Thank you.
Okay, I've had a request for one more question, sorry. You've all mentioned expanding housing. Would you welcome developers and tract housing as opposed to custom to increase single-family homes? And we'll go with Min, Ben, and then Don.
Yeah, I think that that's part of the solution, that there aren't enough starter level homes for folks to move into. If we look at the demographics of how much the median household income is in Red Wing and how much the median home price is in Red Wing, there's a big disconnect there. In other words, it's difficult for someone making the median income to get a mortgage for a home that is the median price. So I think some tract houses or just some basic, simple starter homes could be a big answer. Thank you.
I come from a community that doubled in size as a result of bringing in developers. I watched it happen my entire life. Some of my best friends growing up were able to move to my community because there was, there were homes available that, sure, they didn't have a finished basement, but it allowed a family to move in and become part of our community quickly. So yes, I fully support the idea of bringing developers or tract housing in to lower the overall median cost of our homes in our community. Thank you.
Don.
Yeah, this is a question that is pretty hard to answer actually because this type of a concept, first of all, I have to go through planning. They probably have a bit of authority before it actually come to the council. So we would probably need a lot more information on it. But as I stated earlier, one of the things that we're challenged with is horizontal lining. And depending upon what space that would take out, but if it, if it serves the purpose, I can't see that's, that would be a big issue.
Next we have Nikki, Gary, and Beth.
Yes, I would support developers coming in. But also I would like to entertain the idea of having diverse and different, like with our relatives in Moore's, who they started this hemp housing. And hemp is amazing. And when you want to talk about nuclear waste, hemp is your environmental solution to all that. Not to mention it's rodent resistant, fire resistant, and all these wonderful things. Thank you.
As I mentioned before, we need, you want to call it tract housing, that's fine. But we need to develop homes that are 1,300, 1,500 square feet, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, maybe the basement isn't finished. You know, four micro countertops instead of granite countertops. All I hear from folks is when talking to developers, we only like to build $800,000 homes, $900,000 homes. Well, Hastings, if you're short drive, they've done this. They've increased it. They've had affordable housing there for folks that are working, two family members working. It's very hard to find a home in this city. I was with some older and younger ladies last week and one lady said she used to live in Red Wing. She had a one-bedroom apartment for $1,200 a month. She lives in Hudson, two-bedroom apartment for $700 a month. It's more affordable there. So we have to grow. We have to make sure that we have some homes for seniors that want to downsize, for young families that want to do things. Maybe a front porch so that when they're walking on the sidewalks, you can meet your neighbors. We have to do that.
I grew up in a tract home. So yeah, I support it. Three bedrooms, one bath. Imagine that in the phone, you know, with the cord. So yeah, I totally support. I support different types of housing. I think we have to look at, I love the idea of the mini-house or the mini-home. It doesn't take up so much space. I love that idea. I don't know that I'd work in it in a little bit, but I, I think we have to be open to different ideas. And this hemp thing is totally, I want to learn more about that. So I would be totally open to it and I think we all should be. We have to think differently. I think that's important. Change is important. We have to think differently about how we fix. Thanks.
All right, great. Well, you made it. We went all the way through the entire grid. So we're going to wrap it up with our closing statements and we're going back to the original, the original process. We'll have Don, Min, and then Beth.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. As a candidate, I am open to visiting with anyone at any time. I don't want to be a voice for all citizens. We will not always agree, but it's helpful to have the conversation. Please visit donaldclever.com for more information. I ask for your vote if you're voting early or on Election Day, November 5th. Thank you.
Well, thanks to everybody for being here and thanks to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this really important event. My heritage, my love for democracy, and my decades of service to this community have brought me to this point. And so now I want to tell you what I'm going to commit to do. And if you'd like to, you can write them down. I will meet regularly with residents to hear their joys and concerns about Red Wing. I will always do my homework and show up prepared. I will work to be sure that taxes that are fair. I will support economic growth and business development. I will collaborate with other agencies to effectively address our housing and my mental health needs. I will strengthen and engage with our city boards and commissions. And I will always support public comment. By doing these things, we will create a stronger community by putting people over politics. I thank you for your time and I ask for your vote.
Thank you again to League of Women Voters. You've done an outstanding job tonight. I really appreciate it. And I thank all of you. It's an amazing autumn night tonight. We're sitting in here in a building. So thank you for being here. I hope this evening you got an idea of who I am as a human being and as a potential candidate, as a potential council member. I hope you understand my passion and optimism for this community. If I disliked it, there would be times you disagree with me. That's just how it is for a council member. I promise you, I will be transparent in my thought processes to make that decision. And I will be open to constructive input as this decision process is going on, as well as feedback actor. I commit to you tonight that I will leave with integrity and respect, seeking the best and most workable solution for all the members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have Ben, Nikki, and Gary.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for setting us up. It has been great to talk to all of you tonight, as well as the folks that are doing at home. Thank you also to everyone who has made me feel so damn welcome in this town. I truly, I do not afterwards. I look forward to meeting with more of you. If any of you would like to talk to me more, I, you can reach out to me on a comment form at votebenweldon.com. And if you have any questions, I will be more than happy to answer them. If I don't have the information to provide you the right answer, I will do my homework and get you the right answer before I just talk off the cuff. Thank you again for everything you have done to make me feel finally at home where I live. Thanks.
I was born and raised in Red Wing. I grew up at the YMCA too. Many people, I actually work with David Anderson as an adult now, as he was chasing me around Hawaii when I was a kid before. I'm very action-oriented. I love to talk, but as a former call center representative, we had to take phone calls in under three minutes and less and get those reservations in. So I've got good timing with talking, but I could talk for hours. But I'm more action-oriented and I hope you all see the work that I've done in the community, not only just for Prairie Island, but Red Wing too, because I am a blend of everything. Not only am I, I'm descended of Chief Wabashaw. I am a Finnish and German ancestry, so I do think I'm a perfect blend that represents all of you well.
Thank you to the League and thank you folks for coming out. Just a little bit about my background. I grew up in the University of Chicago on the projects. Two bedroom, six of us, one bathroom, thankfully no sisters. Red Wing is a great community. Do we have issues? Of course we do. But we need to make sure that we continue to support our seniors, to support our schools and our children, our police and fire, so that we have a safe community and be able to go out and about. Red Wing can thrive. It is thriving. We can do a little better, I believe. Thank you very much again. My name is Gary Apple. I'm running for mayor and I need your vote to win.
All right, that brings us to the end of our questions. Please join me in a strong round of applause. It takes a great deal of courage and commitment to throw your hat into the ring. And without your services, your willingness to offer these services, we just wouldn't be here today. So thank you. I also want to thank our League members, particularly Tina, for all their work in setting up these events. for all their work in setting up these events. If anyone is interested in joining the League or finding out more information, there's plenty of information in the front, and we would welcome you. You can participate at whatever level of involvement they can choose. We have one more candidate forum on Wednesday, October 15th. Here is the high school.
Tuesday, October 15th.
Oh, Tuesday, October 15th, at the high school, as well as two informal meet and greets at the library on Tuesday, October 8th with the school board. And again, the after last forum on Wednesday, October 16th, with the candidates for the remaining races. And that one here, that remaining forum will be for the state legislature and the county commission. So I welcome you all, and please, if you have questions, get them to us. You can email it, you can mail it, you can call it in, you can drop it off this evening, I'm guessing. Okay. So thank you again, everyone, for coming, and please get out there and vote, and drive one safely.